We're going to call this meeting to order of Committee of the Whole at Bellingham City Council for, I think today is June 23rd. We have five items in Committee of the Whole this afternoon. The first one is about a resolution adopting our City Council Rules of Procedure. Very important item. So, City Council has the authority to adopt rules of procedure and guidelines for public comment and public hearings. The proposed rules here adopt Robert Rules of Order with several modifications and clarifications to be consistent with the city charter and past council practice. These proposed guidelines are modified slightly from those previously adopted by council and are written to apply to public hearings in addition to the public comment period. And we have Peter Raffato here today to share with us about this. If you all recall, this was an item that came out of our retreat earlier this year. So, you all gave us the nod to go ahead and revisit these and make sure that they're working properly for us. So, go ahead, Peter.
Yeah, thank you. So, we did talk about it at the retreat. We actually, I think during the reorganization meeting, there was a motion that was passed to actually look at some compilation of rules for the City Council. So, it came out of that as well. And in the Agenda Bill, it talks about the rules and the guidelines, and you have both those documents in front of you. And they're both attached to the resolution. The main point here, I think, is to have one place where you have some of your operating rules so that you have it there for reference, so you have a place to insert these when you have something that comes up that you want to have as an ongoing process. By and large, this document memorializes a lot of the council's past practice and past motions and resolutions. There are some changes for council consideration that I will highlight as I go through it. I would recommend that, to the extent that there is anything that's controversial or that needs more discussion, we just take that out because I think it's good to get something on the books that you guys can all agree to. And then, I consider this to be a living document. When you do have those issues come up and you want to make a change to some process and you want it to be something that lives on, you can add it to that document at that point in time. There is one housekeeping matter I put on the dais there, and I made some copies available to the public. Just some background, those are two of the documents that were used in formulating most of the language in the rules for those sections. There were additional resolutions over the years or motions that have been incorporated into this document. I'd like to just walk through it with you on some of the highlights. Starting with the introduction, the main point of this is, this is something that is not to be, this is on page 392 of the packet under the introduction. The main point of that section is just to point out that this is something that is to be enforced within the council, for the council to abide by. It's not something for someone external to enforce against the council. So, if you decide that you want to do things differently at a particular point in time, this is written such that it's implied that you have waived that part of the rules. Section two, generally, this adopts Robert's Rules of Order, which you have done historically in your reorg meeting, I believe, or at least by implication, because that's part of some of the packet that's included with the reorganization meeting. Section three is where we get into the special rules where council may deviate a little bit from Robert's Rules. And this is, again, trying to capture past practice. And specifically, starting on page 393, number one, the presiding officer of the council has the same rights as other members in terms of making motions and the like. I have had that question posed to me, whether it's appropriate for this council to have the president making motions, and this just clarifies that that is something that's appropriate. I'll skip over some of these. If you want to talk about anything in particular at the end, let me know. Number two, on that same section, this is really an effort to, it acknowledges that there can be some informal discussion when no motion is pending, but that it should be limited. You're trying to balance the need for a focused discussion with the need for maybe some discussion before you can formulate a good motion, but the idea here is that it would be limited. But no specific amount of time is designated. I'll skip down to, I think, three and four are basically past practice. Number five, a motion for reconsideration. This is something that Robert's Rules is a little bit unclear because it talks about, you have to bring that motion in the same meeting, or if it's, I believe the terminology, if it's a multi-day session, it has to be brought in the same session. Well, council has meetings spread out over time. This just identifies that a motion for reconsideration can be brought at the same meeting or the next regularly scheduled council meeting. Number six, this is an example, this was a 2005 motion that staff had this understanding of this $250,000 amount as, you know, anything over that could not be on consent agenda. Staff will often put things, not put things on consent agenda, put it on the regular agenda even if it's much lower than that, but this just puts an outer limit to that and specifies that it's meant to be non-controversial items. But that was a motion in 2005, again, never really memorialized in any document, other than in the history of the council. Skipping down to the bottom of 393, we're talking about standing committee operating rules. Number three, this makes it clear, and I think this is mainly what council does, but it's helpful for everyone observing, when the committee chairs summarize the votes on recommendations during the committee meeting prior to taking up the next agenda item. Turning the page to 394, number four at the top. This is my understanding of, I don't know if you would find it anywhere specific in the Robert's Rules. You probably would because it's a real thick book and it's fine print, but in general, in general, the idea is that when there's an introduction made of an agenda item, that it be done in a neutral manner. Obviously, there's going to be debate and positions taken at some point in time. Number five, if this comes back for a vote tonight, I will correct the typo. Number five, it should be under its consideration, but the main idea here is, and this is a slight change, I would say, from what you see in the background. Committee chairs will report out to the full council the recommendations of the committee based on a majority vote of committee members on matters under its consideration. The background document talks about the minority position being summarized. If council wishes to have that in there, that's fine, but ultimately, you know, when you're at the full council, it's all subject to motions and debate, so the minority position can certainly be brought forward by any particular council member. Number seven, I think it's consistent, I believe it's consistent with council's practice that the committee chairs may choose the format for their meetings. I've incorporated this concept, we've had some discussion about this, that if prior notice has been provided to the public, the committee chair may call for public input. And so, we've had some discussions about that, that we want to make sure that there's notice before there's public input taken at a committee meeting. Skipping on down to section four, this would be a significant change for the council, and you may notice actually that the document right now, and it'll have to be fixed, is internally inconsistent because at the very beginning, I talked about the president and the other officers being elected annually. Annual election is obviously the council's past practice. One of the ideas that we talked about is considering the fact that we've adopted, or we're going to be on a biennial budget process, two-year budget process, it may very well make sense for the council to be on a two-year cycle. It allows folks to settle into their roles and go deeper into issues perhaps, but that's totally, just for council's consideration. And I will note that originally, when I was thinking about this, this would line up with the budget process, but in fact, unfortunately, it won't. Because of the election process, your elections would have to be in even number of years, whereas you'd be exactly off track. However, you may still desire that longer period of time when you're dealing with issues that span more than one year. And that's obviously up for council vote, and I can make any changes that are requested for this evening. The next item, skipping over to page 395, there's a previous resolution under B. This is the one where, if you, you know, the council has lots of ex officio appointments, we have a resolution saying that if you're appointed to a nonprofit board, for example, that you're not going to be an officer of that board, and that's for conflict of interest purposes. Excuse me. The rest of the sections, I think, are pretty self-explanatory. They codify or they memorialize previous resolutions. Section seven are the guidelines for public comment. So, as you see on page 396, those are really the guidelines for the presiding officer, and then, and it's directed towards what the options are for the presiding officer in terms of maintaining order at the City Council meeting. And then, Exhibit A are the guidelines that really speak to, that are more for the public, notice to the public as to what the rules are for public comment and for public hearings. And so, I guess moving on to that last document on page 398, this is something that hasn't been changed a lot from what was adopted previously. There are two main changes. One, per council's direction, it includes public hearings as also governed by this document, as well as, it really, under nine, it really says that only if, it refers back to disorderly speech or action, name-calling or personal attacks, obscene or indecent remarks, and derogatory comments on personalities. These are things that speakers are to refrain from, but it also identifies that it's only when that action disrupts or impedes the meeting that you can go to some of the more serious ways to maintain order. Again, the two main themes running through the, or I guess not again, but the two main themes running through the guidelines for public comment are, if you, the options for the council, for the presiding officer, for the more serious actions are only when you have someone impeding the meeting, disrupting the meeting. And secondly, all these should be enforced in a viewpoint-neutral manner, obviously. And I think it's good, that's what council's practice is, but I think it's good to have it memorialized as well. So, if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Okay, sure. And before I take questions, I'll just note, I think we used to post those guidelines for folks for public comment, and we'll start doing that again once we have this settled. And then also, I wouldn't be serving this president a second year, so that is not my intention to put that item in there, just saying. Michael.
Well, I was actually the person who suggested this at our reorg meeting, that we start writing these all in one place and move that task forward at the retreat, and so, I would be looking forward to passing this as is today. But that last-minute idea of two-year terms and committee assignments, that's totally new to me. I haven't had a chance to think about it. I think I don't like it, but I can't approve this. And rather than, like, cut it out and pass it now, I would personally like to go back to the original earlier draft, which just had regular one-year terms, and pass it at our next meeting rather than pass it at this meeting. I would want us to defer voting on this today, to go back to that change, go back to the annual.
You wouldn't want to just amend it now and pass it?
I don't think we're in a hurry. Two weeks is not going to hurt. These are all practices we already do. I think we can wait two weeks to reaffirm what we already do. This document as is actually changes what we do. It deviates from, you know, the 1974.
Correct, yeah. There's a proposal to, I think the original intention, oh, Peter.
If it makes any difference, that's, there's three or four words that can be changed in this document to go back to the way it was before, and I can have that prepared in writing for this evening as well as read into the record before the passage of the resolution.
Well, given that, I would motion that we amend section four to go back to earlier drafts to maintain the annual election cycle.
Okay. Any other comments? I think I, I'm curious, are you just uncomfortable with making that significant of a change without more time to think about it?
Right.
Okay. Well, is it worth tabling for two weeks to think about that, or do we just want to amend it? Roxanne. And then Pinky.
Personally, as I think about it, I'm not really comfortable with the idea of a two-year because what if I get into a role and after year one, I don't really want to do it anymore? And then you'd be stuck for two years doing something according to this. That's why I'm a little uncomfortable with it.
Thank you.
I tend to think that a year, I would support a year because there are lots of really great committees, and I would like an opportunity to try many of the different ones, so one year, I think, is a great, great cycle.
Okay. Well, and if, Mayor Kelly.
I'm just saying, I don't have a problem either way with it. There's some positives with doing it two years, two years in a row, but the one year, Roxanne makes a good point because sometimes if you have a chair that's not doing a great job, you know, you're stuck for two years. Or if you're not satisfied with what you're doing, you're stuck for two years. One year is fine. I have no problem with going now, but I understand where it could work.
Well, and it was my suggestion, just when we went to biennial budgets, thinking how it worked at the state level, is if you got elected in 2010, like I did, and you had your reorganization meeting before the end of, you know, before you actually took office, then you would line up with the budget cycles. But having said that, I really don't care one way or the other. I just thought it might be a suggestion to be debated. I would prefer that, since it was my suggestion, that we would take it out and talk about it in a different venue so that you can pass these rules, because I think the rules and procedures are important. So, there's no pride of ownership or any, you know, other reason besides the biennial budget that I was, and past practice that I was used to, so.
Okay. Terry.
Yeah, one thing we could do is take it out now, move to pass this, and at our reorg meeting, if people have time to think about it during that point and somebody wants to bring it up, then that would be a good time to do that, and we can have a broader discussion. People can think about it during that period.
Yeah, I like, that was my thought as well. Murray, would you mind making a note that we may revisit that topic in the reorg meeting in January? Thank you. Okay, so, Michael, did you make a motion?
Yeah, I did. I made a motion to revise section four to go back to the annual election cycle for council positions and chairmanships.
So, section four, number four?
Well, it's section four A, and it's some of them, but not all of them. That some, but not all of parts of section four A will need to be changed, and Peter says he has an earlier version that he could work from.
Yeah, it's really the word biennially in four A, and the words two-year term appears two or three other times in section four, and I would just change those.
Okay. So, I'll take a second to Michael's motion, Terry. Okay, thank you. And so, Peter, you'll bring back some amended language this evening. Okay, we aren't going to vote those. So, all those in favor of making the change from the proposed two-year term to one-year term, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Okay, and motion passes six-zero with Jean Knutson absent, and we'll bring that forward this evening. Jack?
I have a procedural question about the fact that we just was asking for a second in a committee.
Yeah.
In a committee of the whole, are we asking for seconds? Or is it just going to be, you know, simple motion? I mean, we're kind of changing these rules over the last three, four years, and I'm just, I'm wondering how our body wants to work that.
Yeah, I prefer to take motions and seconds and vote as a rule of thumb, but it's not required.
Because in our committee, in our committee structure, we are, in fact, that's what's basically stated in this document. We're just simply, just one motion, and that's it. But.
Michael. And then Terry.
You've raised a really good point, because these standing committee operating rules are written to apply to the three-member working committees and not to the committee of the whole. So, if we just maybe added a language that said, "other than the committee of the whole," or something like that, Peter, to make it clear that these rules apply to the three-member committees, not to the committee of the whole, and then a second would, and a second would still be needed in the committee of the whole, which I think is what.
I guess that's kind of how I've been thinking of it as well, because in the committee, there's only three. Terry?
Yeah, the other part of that is, this does read, "Motions in committee meetings do not require a second." It doesn't say a second will not be asked for, and so, it's perfectly fine to ask for it because sometimes there's a reason, you can get a good read, but.
Well, however, if a second is being asked for and not given, does that mean the motion's dead? You know, you can request a second, but, you know.
The way this language is, it's not.
I just, I'm just bringing up the point because I just want us to be consistent on how we apply our rules or our guidelines.
So, Peter, do you think that you can fairly easily clarify that in committee of the whole, we would ask for seconds? Okay. And add that to the language this evening? Anybody else want to? Okay, Terry.
No, with those changes, I would just recommend approval of adoption, that we adopt the City Council Rules of Procedures with the changes.
Second? So, given the changes that we've discussed.
Right.
All those in favor of recommending adoption for this evening, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. Motion passes six-zero with Jean Knutson absent. We'll bring that forward this evening. Anything else on these guidelines and rules of procedure? Seeing none, we'll move on. Next item here is consideration of a contract for a pro temp hearing examiner. The city hearing examiner, Don Sterwold, retires on June 30th, 2014. Congratulations, Don. The city is in the process of hiring a new hearing examiner. However, the city anticipates a gap in hearing examiner coverage between June 30th and when a new hearing examiner is hired. Bellingham Municipal Code 2.56.010 authorizes the city to retain a pro temp hearing examiner in such situations. The city sent out requests for proposals to three law firms which specialize in providing hearing examiner services, and staff recommend contracting with Sharon Rice for pro temp hearing examiner services. The fiscal impact here is that services will be billed at the rates specified in our attached contract in the packet. Total cost will depend on the number of hours worked and will be partially offset by the savings from the vacant hearing examiner position. And we've got Alan here today, but Peter, did you want to jump in?
Yeah, I'll start out. Peter Raffato, Legal Department, and yeah, as is reflected in the Agenda Bill with Don Sterwold's retirement, we have been in the process for hiring for a permanent replacement. To date, the process has not identified a consensus in terms of something to recommend for the appointment by the mayor and confirmation by council, and so, that process is ongoing. But early on, we recognized, even with the process, that there could be a potential gap between Don's retirement and filling the position, and so, that's what has led to this Agenda Bill, and I think Alan has more specifics on it.
Okay.
Alan Mariner, Deputy City Attorney. I think, I just have a couple of additional comments. I think Peter's covered it, and you, and the Agenda Bill pretty much says it, but in researching the process to follow in appointing a pro temp hearing examiner, staff discovered that language in Bellingham Municipal Code, Section 256020, authorizing the mayor to appoint pro temp hearing examiners, had been inadvertently dropped from our code back in 2002. And we just want to emphasize, we want to bring you up to speed and emphasize the mayor's need to be able to appoint pro temp hearing examiners to serve in the cases of conflicts of interest or the unavailability of the regular hearing examiner. So, we're going to be bringing forward an ordinance to correct that error that was made back in 2002. As council has pointed out, we did send out three requests for proposals to law firms that specialize in providing hearing examiner services. Based on evaluation of those, the responses we received, we're recommending that the city contract with Sharon Rice for pro temp hearing examiner services. Her qualifications are included in your Agenda Bill packet at page 400. So, we're just seeking a motion authorizing the mayor to execute the contract with Ms. Rice, recognizing that in a month or so, we'll be bringing that ordinance back to correct the situation where, once that ordinance is brought back, we will, the mayor will have the authority, if council makes that correction, to appoint pro temp hearing examiners, temporary hearing examiners, without coming back to council.
Great, thank you. Any questions for staff or discussion? Okay, entertain a motion to approve this contract that we'll bring forward this evening.
Yeah, I move that we authorize the mayor to authorize a contract.
Second?
For hearing examiner.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to authorize the mayor to enter into a contract with a pro temp hearing examiner. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, motion passes six-zero with Jean Knutson absent. Thank you very much. We'll bring that forward this evening. Mary Jane. Okay, yes, "Extension of emergency interim zoning related to the cultivation of medical marijuana for personal use and in collective gardens." On July 1st, 2013, wow, almost a year ago, the City Council adopted an emergency ordinance and interim zoning regarding land use regulations related to the cultivation of medical marijuana for personal use and in collective gardens. The emergency interim ordinance was adopted to allow staff time to study the issues concerning medical marijuana, and it expires July 1st, 2014. State legislature was also to consider medical marijuana regulations in the 2014 legislative session, however, no bills were passed. Due to conflicting regulations between medical and recreational marijuana, the possibility of near-future legislative action, as well as a recent decision on medical marijuana from the Court of Appeals, staff recommends extending the emergency interim regulations related to medical marijuana. And again, I'll turn it over to Alan Mariner.
Yes, Alan Mariner, Deputy City Attorney. A couple of things that I want to emphasize. One is, the interim zoning ordinance expires at the end of this month. That's why we're here. And without taking action tonight, that expiration will occur, so the rules that we currently have in place will go away, and there will be no rules, and people may have to come, will come in and will operate under no rules for regulating medical marijuana. I also want to emphasize that the interim zoning ordinance that we currently have in place, that we adopted a year ago, allows individuals to get their medicine. It provides for collective gardens in the city's industrial zones and the cultivation of medical marijuana in the city's residential zones. That's what we currently have in place. I also want to emphasize that the current ordinance does not require a permit for the cultivation of medical marijuana for personal use. So, staff is essentially waiting for the state to adopt more specific rules for medical marijuana. The Liquor Control Board, if you're following the issue, last fall recommended merging the medical marijuana system with the one for recreational marijuana. The state legislature considered the matter, and has been noted, no bill was passed. However, the pressure for the state to act is building. This includes pressure from the federal government to enact more stringent regulations for medical marijuana, and also, a recent state court of appeals decision that held that collective gardens are illegal under current Washington state law. So, staff is recommending that City Council maintain the status quo tonight by adopting an emergency ordinance, extending the interim zoning ordinance for medical marijuana for an additional six months. We think we're going to need more than six months, just to give you a heads up, because the state legislature isn't going to act in six months, but that's the longest we can take under state law. We'll probably come back again for another six. for another six, asking for another six months. If, the other thing that I want to point out, one council member is missing, is that passage of the emergence, emergency ordinance under our charter requires an affirmative vote of at least five council members. If approved by council this evening, the emergency ordinance will take effect immediately to prevent a lapse in the city's zoning for medical marijuana. Council will be required to conduct a public hearing on this emergency ordinance, and we're tentatively scheduling that hearing for July 21st, your July 21st meeting. That's a requirement under state law. And with that, Kurt Navafeld and I are available to answer any questions the council may have.
So even the extension requires, sorry, the emergency extension also requires five votes of council?
Yeah, it's an emergency ordinance that doesn't go through the first, second, third, and final in separate meetings, requires the affirmative vote of five members.
Okay. Terry?
I'm just glad to hear that you did clarify that it will probably need to be more than six months, because in the agenda bill, I had to really question the statement about the possibility of a near legislative action, because I just can't imagine. They've proved themselves to be totally inept in this issue, and I don't see, you know, where them moving quickly on this. You know, they've, legislature have shown that they're.
The only thing that I would say to that is there is pressure. There is real pressure, both on the federal level and the fact that you now have court decisions that if they don't take some action. And the other thing that's going to happen is that we're going to start seeing the recreational, the retail recreational businesses are going to start opening. So all of those things, I think, will lead to, I don't disagree with Councilman Borneman, but there, there is a lot of pressure there.
And, and I hope you're, I really hope that they would finally get it together, because it's, you know, they need to act on this and not leave us hanging out there.
Pinky and then Michael.
Alan, I just want to make sure that I understand. So we're saying that we want to keep all the rules that we have existing for medical marijuana to stay the same. So there's no changes in where they can go or the rules that they have existing right now. It's not like anybody has to stop doing business or change anything. We're just leaving it as is. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. Michael?
Just to also kind of clarify, this is not, this is not an emergency ordinance, or is it an emergency ordinance?
It is.
It is?
It is an emergency.
Which means we'll need to have a hearing on this?
Right. Within 60 days.
And do we need to reach a finding again on the emergent nature?
I think there are findings in, in the ordinance.
I was scanning. There's like 10,000 wherazas. But, okay, so we do have to reach the exact same finding and have the exact same delay hearing?
Correct.
Thank you.
Jack?
So Alan, are we making a motion, because this is an emergency ordinance, is, is this body this afternoon asked to go and pass the emergency ordinance, or do we do this tonight?
Well, you would do it this, this evening. I mean, because the, the rules are still in place. We, you have time. I, I think, and Peter, correct me if I'm wrong, but you do have a motion this afternoon that you would then consider and vote on this evening. But I just want to be really clear. If you don't take action tonight and pass the ordinance, then we're going to have a lapse.
Okay, then I would, I would make a motion to, to move this to, to this evening as an emergency ordinance.
Second?
Okay, Roxanne?
Just so anybody who's viewing this is clear, can we offer a scenario on what may happen if we didn't do this tonight? Because I want to make it clear that this is not a vote against marijuana, especially medical marijuana. But I feel like the scenario could be that if we didn't pass this, then people may want to open up their medical marijuana growing. But then state regulations could come down, and then they'd have to shut it down. Is that a scenario that could help people, you know, understand what we're doing?
Well, if, if the rules, the locals, if the city rules lapse, then we really don't have any rules. So the guidance, when, and we get calls frequently, what can we do it? And where can we do it? We wouldn't really know. And so there'd be, I think, confusion and a lack of clarity as to where, where it's okay to do these various growing.
Thank you. Okay, so we have a motion and a second to bring forward this ordinance this evening for passing. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, motion passes six zero. We'll bring that forward this evening with Jean absent. Jack?
I had just a informational question. What's the status on recreational marijuana at this point with, as it pertains to the city and our, our planning efforts?
Good afternoon, Kurt Navafeld, Planning and Community Development Department. We have been following the, the state rules and implementation by the Liquor Control Board of evaluating the licenses for both production, processing, and as well as retailing. One of the things that we assumed would happen was that the state would continue to make multiple changes and update their rules as they went through, kind of a learning process for all. So we've been tracking those, incorporating those, doing our own studies onto the potential impacts associated with, with recreational marijuana, whether it's growing and/or retailing. We've refined our interim rules, and we'll be bringing them forward to the Planning Commission very soon, and you'll be seeing them most likely towards the end of the summer. So.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Oh, Pinky, one more.
Can I ask one follow-up question on that? So is there like a, a date that the state has scheduled for recreational marijuana places to open or start processing?
Yeah, they've been actually issuing licenses for, since about the beginning of the year. We've got several manufacturers in place already. There's one official licensed production and processor in Bellingham at this point. We're also working with one applicant that is hoping to have his retail store open the beginning of July. It's our understanding that the state wants to initially issue 20 retail licenses the first week of July, and most likely this one individual within the city will be one of those. So very, very soon.
Okay, and Roxanne?
Well, I just wanted to make everybody laugh. My values about this are really going to be tested in how much I support this development in our community, because the actual sanction grower that got approved is directly across the street from my house.
Okay, I think that's it on this item, unless there's anything else for staff? No? Okay, thank you very much. Next up, we have a presentation on the waterfront district. It's an implementation status report. Staff will provide us with an update on a number of projects the city is leading in the waterfront district. We've got Tara Sundine and some other staff with us today.
Good afternoon. While Leslie is setting up the PowerPoint, I wanted to give you a little update on a project that is not led by the city of Bellingham, but impacts the city's projects, and that is the selection of a developer, and that effort's being led by the Port of Bellingham. So if you recall, the interlocal agreement that we entered into at the port, that's a critical, we call it a critical path item to various projects. And primarily, it's those projects that are in the downtown waterfront area. So two of those that we will be talking briefly with you today about, one is Granary Blo Dell. That's the main piece of infrastructure that runs through the site and connects Rotor Bridge with Cornwall Avenue. And the other one is Watcom Waterway Park. The other port-led projects are cleanup. And so cleanup projects need to happen before we make investments and move things along. And Leslie will talk about how, how some changes in timelines for Watcom Waterway are impacting our timeline on Watcom Waterway Park. But as far as Granary Blo Dell goes, we have been at kind of a holding pattern the last couple of months. We've done some survey work, but we've kind of taken that project and Watcom Waterway as far as we can without hearing from the future developer that, yes, this, this works for us. We want to make sure that if we're investing, we, we get that roadway and the, the alignment that's going to work for the developer. And we are at a point right now that in order to stay and meet our deadlines in our interlocal agreement, we will, we need to kind of get that nod from the port and Harcourt that it, it looks good. And so we just did receive that nod from the port last week. And that is with regard to Granary and Blo Dell, that, that general alignment that goes back over to Cornwall. And that means that we can now get our consultants back engaged and, and move things forward. As far as Watcom Waterway Park goes, we're probably going to hold off for a little bit longer, because we want to make sure that things are progressing even further with Harcourt, because how that development interfaces with our park and exactly that width, and we know how much acreage we're getting in there, but we have a little bit of flexibility if something works better for Harcourt and still works for us. So that one, we also have more time to deliver on, but I wanted to let you know that the port is still in negotiations with Harcourt. Things are progressing. Rob Fix has indicated that probably in mid-July, there will be a public kind of presentation of staff about the progress, and, and a little bit more about how, how things are progressing. So I just wanted to give you that update if, if you're getting questions. And then if things continue to progress well, Harcourt and their design team will be coming either late summer or early fall to be giving more of a community presentation. So what Harcourt's been looking at, in addition to the details, the kind of transactional details with the port, they've been looking at our master plan, asking staff questions. They're, they're trying to make sure that this master plan's going to work for them. And if there are some elements that don't work for them, they want to make sure that they communicate that with us and see if some tweaks can be made. But so far, we're seeing some mostly alignment with our plan. So I wanted to share that with you. And we have Leslie here. Today, we're really focused on parks discussion, so she'll be providing an overview of where we're at with Cornwall Beach Mark, Park Master Planning and Watcom Waterway Park Master Planning. And then Freeman Anthony will come up and give you a quick report on the utility master plan in Granary Blo Dell.
Good afternoon, council. Leslie Bryson, I'm the Development Manager for Parks and Recreation, and I'm excited that we are making some progress on some of our waterfront parks. And I'm, like Tara mentioned, I'm going to talk to you about two today. The Watcom Waterway Park in the downtown waterfront area. And I'm going to start out with Cornwall Beach Park down at the south end of the waterfront area. Last year, we started master planning for this park. And recently, you had an update on the two cleanup sites located here, Cornwall Landfill and the RG Haley site. And in that presentation, the project managers talked about how that cleanup is being coordinated with the park master plan. And that's really been a great coordination. We have a city and port team. We've been meeting every other week to coordinate our park master plan with everything else that's happening in this area. And I think everybody that's working on that is here today. Amy Cram from the City Attorney's Office, Craig Mueller from Public Works, Renee LaCroix from Public Works Natural Resources, Brian Gowron from the port, and Steve Sundine from Planning have been involved in those regular meetings. So we make sure we're communicating and talking about all the pros and cons of this park development. So at this point, we have developed a draft final concept plan, and we're also working on shoreline concepts. We will have a final public meeting before we take it to Park Board for a recommendation and come back to you this fall to approve a master plan for the park. We developed earlier this year a vision statement for the park based on the input that we've gotten from the public. It's exciting to have a new park on the waterfront. Exciting opportunity for the community. People are really excited about it, and the opportunities there for waterfront access, as well as improved habitat for wildlife. The site is, it's a large site. If you got to go out there on the walk we had a couple of months ago, I think everybody's impressed with really how big it is. It's about 2,300 feet across the length of it. It's about 14 acres, so it's almost twice as big as the main part of Boulevard Park with about half, almost half a mile of total shoreline. So there's a lot of opportunity for water access. And, but because we don't know exactly what the final cleanup action plans are going to be, we, we don't know how we're, how we can develop the park. So we're doing a, more of a conceptual master plan at this level, and wait until those cleanup action plans are done before we really get in to start designing the park. As far as schedule for development, after the Cornwall Landfill is finished, it's anticipated there will be a clean cap of material put over the top, and that would be seeded and graded. And then potentially, when, with RG Haley being capped, we could open the first phase to the public and then potentially develop the park in phases. As with most master planning park efforts, we start out looking at opportunities and constraints. There's obvious opportunities here with waterfront access, waterfront views, island views. We have, it's a big park that can accommodate a lot of big community events. There are some natural pocket beaches that are already there that could be expanded upon. So we do have, and we have some development potential, especially outside of the, the landfill and RG Haley site. So there is area where potential, development potential exists. We also have constraints, obviously. We have a landfill in the RG Haley cleanup site. We have a kind of a, at the entrance, a bit of a pinch point here, coming into the site. Cornwall Avenue crosses the railroad further to the north, and coming down from War Street, you have to cross the railroad. The railroad runs along the entire length backside of the park. So there are obviously some constraints also associated with developing this as a park. Following our first public meetings, steering committee meetings, staff input and our team input, we developed three different concepts for the park. And each featured a major, features a trail that runs through the park connecting the overwater walkway to Cornwall Avenue, continuing on down to the waterfront, with some other circulation paths through the site. They all featured large open areas for community activities, varying levels of parking. And they all had, they all took advantage, of course, of the, the beaches too, and enhancing those for public enjoyment and for habitat. They also all looked at three different levels of development. As you know, in the approval of the master plan, there is a proposed development pad on this site, and we said throughout this process, we would gauge the community's interest in what they wanted to see here. So this, these three concept plans went from having everything from commercial site with residential above to just a space for food trucks with no actual commercial building development, and then something in between, which would be commercial that would serve park users. Our current conceptual master plan that we have, the preliminary master plan, then took those three concepts, went back up to the public and our steering committee, committee, as well as working through our staff with our consultants that are on the cleanup projects and looking at what seemed reasonable and what seems feasible. And having a, a community park that has a lot of potential for large community events in a large open area, keeping that, that path, major pathway through the park with secondary paths that meander along the waterway and circulate throughout the park. Having a cap of parking over the RG Haley seems like a reasonable solution for parking in that area. In order to mitigate the, the railroad that runs along the backside, having a berm and a wall along this side of the park, the berm can also serve as a natural amphitheater for performances that might occur, or just for sunset viewing. Expanding on the beaches for Expanding on the beaches for recreational activity and also for habitat and incorporating habitat elements into the intertidal area. We also have picnic shelters, a playground, restrooms, of course. And then we had an enclosed pavilion similar to the Squawlicum Boat House or the pavilions that are at Blo Dell Donovan in Fairhaven Park for community rentals and community, smaller community events. And then as far as the commercial, what we generally heard is a smaller commercial on this site that serves the park. And so what we're showing here is a cafe or coffee shop and then a, a facility that might provide rental equipment that people can use on site, like kayaks or stand-up paddleboards or even rent a kite to use while you're at the park. The city would not develop those commercial pads. That would be done through a request for proposals process. And we have heard from different members in the community who are interested in what will happen there. But also, the other idea was to have accommodation for food trucks that could come down during special events to provide alternative types of services like that. Earlier this year, we added, increased the scope for habitat, looking at habitat concepts along the shoreline. We want to make sure that habitat can be incorporated into the site, either with the cleanup or following the cleanup and that the cleanup doesn't preclude habitat. And what we found is that we can probably either incorporate it with the cleanup if we have funding available, or if it needs to come later on, it can go on top of the cleanup. And, and doing shoreline habitat improvements, intertidal habitat improvements can be accommodated along most of the shoreline, even though we don't know for sure how the entire area's going to end up. We do see a lot of possibility here. And so it's been great having Renee on the team to help guide that. And so far, we've just done very conceptual work on this and we're going to take this a little bit further in this phase. Next, I want to talk about the Watcom Waterway Park. That is, we started, we hired our consultant last year. We're doing, using the same consulting team that's working on the Granary Blo Dell Road Project and the Utility Master Plan. So that's been a great coordination. And we are working now on the master plan and we're just finalizing our basis of design at this point. And as Tara mentioned, moving further along on this, it'll be on hold until the port has a developer and we have a clean site to work with. So the project area extends from Roder with an entrance at Central Avenue, which will eventually be closed to traffic when Granary Blo Dell opens. This gives you an idea of the scale of the site. And we're planning right now going down to, so starting up at Roder, Central, going down to Commercial Green to make sure that we coordinate this connection here. We're looking at opportunities and constraints again, where we might have activity nodes. We want to have a path that goes all the way through the site so we have good connectivity and show where we have access points. We're having a public meeting this Thursday to kick off this project and get community input on what kind of ideas people want to see on this, at this park. KPFF Sub-Consultant Linscape Architect is Walker Macy. They've done a lot of waterfront park design development and they've shown us, given us a lot of ideas that we can share with the public to get people's thoughts about what we want to see on this site. We can have festivals and fairs and performances. They've done a couple of concepts, real concept level designs, just to show people how we can get a path through the site. It's fairly wide. It's a minimum of 12 feet wide or wider access down to the mortgage, visitor mortgage dock, which will be developed by the port. And then again, just looking at ideas from other parks they've developed. This one is in the Portland area, I think along the Willamette River in Portland. So just gives people an idea of, and a vision of what this might look like, different kinds of materials we might use, different features we might have, and how we might also reuse some of the existing items that are on the site. This piece on the left is a hatch cover on the dock that I think there was, the story goes that there was somebody that worked at GP that was an artisan welder and he made several of these and they're really beautiful. We want to make sure those get protected and we can reuse those, reusing other equipment and iconic structures that are on the site. And so again, we have our public meeting this Thursday at 6:30 at the library and we're just going to get our basis of design and then wait until we're ready to move forward. So I think Fritz is up next to talk about streets and utilities.
Thank you, Leslie.
Hello, thank you, Freeman Anthony, Public Works. And I think if there are questions, we can probably just take them all at the end. So these are going to be quite quick here. So updates on the infrastructure side of things. We did, as Leslie said, we've been working with the same group of consultant teams and in the world of Granary Blo Dell, we've been working also towards what you would call a basis of design, which is get your survey, understand what your constraints are. However, until recently, not knowing if our street grid was something that we could really bank on, we've, we've actually really, we haven't even done much in the way of engineering. Working with Tara and the port now, we will start moving forward with our consultants and understanding, you know, knowing that our street grid is, is something that we can work with is, is a great, is great news and it definitely speaks, you know, well to kind of how we went about it. So as you see up there, we have done the, the site survey. Now we can move forward with basically the street grid, which essentially starts what eventually would be the binding site plan, but also allows us to set grades on how streets connect to Roder and how we connect, at least from a temporary standpoint, to Cornwall, which will give you your, your full corridor through that. Along with that will be the bigger, you know, we'll start the process of looking at transportation modeling and traffic trips and all that. The last time I visited folks on this was for the district-specific utilities. So as you know, or, or may have learned from your friends in the Public Works Committee, that we did in fact look at, release a draft issue of the preliminary findings. The summary of those is, there seems to be, there's a very good case to do to expand our district raw water service as we can within current regulations to provide non-potable water for irrigation and other potential uses. So we'll move forward as we finalize those preliminary, the preliminary report and bring those back to council as recommendations that came, come out of that. District energy is, appears to have what we, what we call net positive, net present value, NPV, which suggests it has a good business case to look at, to look forward. So part of the recommendations will be how to move forward on district energy because it does seem to, to make a good case. And then the district hydro, the big thing with that is not having a full understanding of watershed maintenance, or sorry, management. Will kind of drive that discussion further. So you'll see that in the recommendations. All the while, before we bring this, we'll wait, we'll go through the stakeholder process. We're getting some input from the port and we understand that the developer also is looking at our preliminary findings and we'll, we'll be able to give us some input on that. So getting a feel for how they view some of these, some of these district-specific utilities. So that's, that's something we hope to get to, we hope to be talking to you about that in July, pending development of the port's relationship with the, the developer. Following that, utility master plan, we'll set all the utilities, so not only district-specific, but we'll look at stormwater and the water system, sewer system and all that. And included in the stormwater will be some of the findings that we did on the front end for centralized versus decentralized and if there's opportunities to help with off-site issues as well. So with that, that's really all I have. And I'll turn it over to Tara.
Thank you. Well, that's about it for today, but I did want to mention on the Watcom Waterway Park piece, when we came to you in, in February, late February and gave you an update, our construction schedule was the 2015 construction. That was our, our plan at that time. And you're seeing today that it's now 2016. And I just wanted you to, to be clear on that. And that is because we, we really can't proceed with construction of Watcom Waterway Park until the cleanup of Watcom Waterway is done. Because Watcom Waterway cleanup is going to change that, that shoreline, that interface there. And they're taking out the clarifier and removing pilings and, and, and we got to pick up where they kind of leave off. So I, I wanted to make sure that you're aware of that. And that is the case on, on almost all of these cleanups is, these are, our, our schedules are dependent on the cleanup schedules progressing as planned and obtaining permits as planned. So that's all we have for you today. Do you have any questions?
Great. This was information only, but does anyone have questions for staff? Michael.
Thank you. I'd like to go back to the parks plan for Cornwall Beach in particular. There is a design element there that is giving me some trouble. It has to do with you have that one main pedestrian pathway pulled back considerably from shoreline, but then Leslie, you referred to another one that would meander through the area closest to the tidal zone, just immediately upwind from the tidal zone. That strikes me as a way to create exactly the sort of conflict that we could avoid ahead of time. We are asking people to tromp in the most sensitive part of the shoreline. I would suggest a far better solution that I would be more supportive of is sort of overlooks. You have a little path that goes out and there's an overlook. And overlook is different because then you're sort of like told, stay on the overlook, go and see things, as opposed to this where you are invited to walk across the sensitive area. So I, I think one of the advantages of boardwalks or overwater walkways or things like that, some of the raised pathways in the parks that were anticipated that go through wetlands, is it allows people to walk through nature, but in a confined manner that keeps them off of sensitive habitat where you can easily imagine, you know, young plants would never mature because they're always being walked on.
Kids are going to love it.
Well, actually, at, at this scale, unfortunately, you can't really see what this shows, but we've worked really hard to try and get something that does exactly what you're saying. These little points here are overlooks and the path does meander closer to the shoreline and then brings people further away from the shoreline. This type of path is allowed in the shoreline setback, but still, we wanted to meander it out towards the edge and, but provide a place, because we know people are going to want to get down to the shoreline and provide a place where they, where they can do that. So with, with overlook points and places to get to them.
I guess I, I'm not governed by what is allowed. I'm guided by what I think would be the best balance. And I'm seeing substantial sections of shoreline that are clearly dedicated for human use. It would make sense to me to also have substantial sections that where, where habitat is prioritized and human access is more than secondary. So that would be my guidance going into this planning process.
My guidance is, I like this. It gets people down where they want to be, still protects, and people are going to go. And I like that concept.
I think that's the idea is that people will want to get down to the water and if we give them a controlled place to do that and have an overlook that meanders in and out with substantial amount of habitat in the area outside of that pathway. But I appreciate your comment as well.
Jack.
What's the approximate square footage of the structures that are in this preliminary plan?
It's flexible and I have, for the, for all of the structures or the commercials, the two commercial structures?
I guess the two, well, I guess all of the structures. I mean, I'm basing it off of what we approved last December.
They are probably a total of maybe 10,000 square feet or so. I, I, sorry, I don't have that information, but quite a bit less than what is allowed. And this is based on what we generally have heard. It certainly could be more or could be less.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Questions for staff or Kelly?
Well, the reason that we want to do these updates is to get some feedback from the council about, you think we're going in the right direction, the wrong direction. And just to make it very clear, if there are, Michael has an opinion about something, Terry likes it, if there is some other direction that you want to give to the administration about the development of the park, it would be good to decide if you want to have that conversation. Now, having said that, there'll be a public hearing, there'll be an opportunity to, for the, the council to support or to adopt the park plan. So because we're moving in this direction doesn't mean there's no opportunity for council input. Obviously, if there is a majority of the council that would like us to do something different, we'd rather know earlier rather than later because there's a lot of effort and, and that's going into this. We can't proceed with anything until we get our permits. And we don't have our permits yet. And that has been holding this project up. So we want to make sure that we're ready to go if the product, if the permits get adopted or approved, issued. But we can't move forward until, as Leslie said, tell, and Tara said, until the cleanup's done and the permits are, are approved to do the cleanup. So I just want to make that pretty clear to the council that some of this is within our control and some of it is not within our control.
Thank you very much. Pinky and then Jack.
If we are going to take an opportunity to comment, I want to say that I think this looks terrific. And I love the way that it is integrated for little and big kids to wander down to the water because they will. So I think it's good for us to plan. I love the recreational facilities. I like the opportunity that we're going to build, what did you send to?
A berm.
A berm, thank you. So that if we have concerts in the park, a hill, that people can look at it. I, I think this is a beautiful plan and I think you guys have done great work. Thank you.
Jack.
As a major detractor of this whole, this whole project, I must say that, you know, that's about 90% of what I would have preferred. So I think, I think that's a pretty good job. With the Waterway Park, I guess I had a question with Harcourt. The latest iteration of what Harcourt has been, you know, I know that they've been working back and forth with the port. What, what is the, the latest plan that Harcourt has as it pertains to the commercial street green section of the Waterway Park? Are they still looking at wanting to have commercial street green built in the way that the, the master plan had, had thought it should be built? Or are they looking at something different?
We've, we've, a couple of us have been given an opportunity to take a look at what they've proposed to see if we think it's consistent. So their, their question is, so they're, they're looking at the waterfront going, here's our vision for it. And they're, they're taking what we have and I'd, if I could describe it as kind of amping it up. So we adopted some basic framework of a master plan and they've, they've got to bring a little bit more life into it, okay? A little more detail. But generally, what we're seeing is consistency with the plan, but they haven't been given the opportunity, and I think they want to be given the opportunity to present their ideas to the public. And I think they're still working that out with the port. And so I hesitate to comment on something that could, is probably still in a, a work in progress.
Okay. I mean, they've given, they've given their preliminary approval of Granary Blo Dell Street, but not anything else beyond that.
That's right, right.
And that's also contingent on the fact that they signed a contract with the port?
Correct. And our conversation on that is really between the port and, and, and us. And so, but we've also made it clear that we're going to design Granary Blo Dell one time and we're not going to pay to redesign it. So. So if, uh, a change is made later, then that would be the responsibility of the port and/or a future developer to pay for those changes. But...
Okay. So are we, are we kind of, um, shoot, you know, shooting the gun a little bit sooner than later? Because we were, I, I think our, our agreement internally was that we would not do any work on the street until we had full direction from the developer. But the developer is not technically signed a contract with the port. So we don't know who the developer is at this particular point.
So we have, uh, an agreement to begin construction two years after the plan was adopted. And we don't have to construct that road if there isn't a developer. But what, so we're kind of, we didn't anticipate this. But we're at this point where we still have to design the road in order to be able to start constructing it two years after the agreement was, was adopted. So we have to keep progressing and we're gonna, we're progressing, but we wanted to, we wanted to hold off a little bit to see that, that the port and Harcourt got far enough along that Harcourt could look at our master plan in detail and look at that grid system and be able to weigh in. So...
Okay. So who, who's responsible for the sunk cost of design if it turns out that Harcourt and the port do not sign an agreement and that the port ends up choosing a different developer down the line that has a different scheme about how that road should be built?
That is, that's the port. And if the port passes that on to the developer, that's, that's between them.
We have, we have a, we have a signed agreement that stays, that states that responsibility?
We have a signed agreement that says we're building this road, which is what has been approved. And we have corresponded with the port about who pays for any change at a later date.
Okay.
And that would not be the city.
Cause I, it just, you know, when we were discussing this in November and December, it sounded like there was like these trigger points that would happen and that...
Mm-hmm. There are.
But the trigger point of having the, the developer sign off on this is, sounds like it's happening sooner than later because the developer actually hasn't been, doesn't have a signed contract with the port yet.
We don't, we don't have a trigger that says the developer has to approve our alignment. So as a courtesy, the city is actually asking for them to say, yeah, that looks good because we wanted to make sure if they had something completely different envisioned, we didn't design something.
Okay. It, it just sounds different than what, what I heard from Ted, um, a few months ago. That's all.
Okay. Anyone else? Rebecca?
Well, I just wanted to say I'm glad we're looking at the park development in terms of community gathering because the thing that I'm envisioning is how fun it's gonna be on the Fourth of July for our community members to gather in these places to get such great views of the fireworks show.
The legal fireworks show. Anyone else? Okay. See none? Thank you very much. Appreciate all the information and the update. Okay. We have one last item in committee of the whole this afternoon. It is a work session to adopt the 2015 to 2020 Transportation Improvement Program, also known as the TIP. The six-year Transportation Improvement Program is adopted annually to plan and program public funding toward capital improvements to Bellingham's multimodal transportation network. State law requires cities to adopt the TIP before July 1st each year. Thank you, Chris. The draft 2015-2020 TIP is placed on Public Works Staff Recommendations, excuse me, is based on Public Works Staff Recommendations. Public Works Staff presented the draft TIP to the Public Works Advisory Board and the Transportation Commission on May 13th, 2014. A public hearing on this was also held on June 9th, earlier this month. Okay. I'm gonna turn it over to Ted Carlson in Public Works.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Ted Carlson, Public Works Department. Uh, this work session is a follow-up on the public hearing. At the public hearing, uh, staff did present on all of the projects and the six-year TIP. What we were prepared to do today is go over any questions that council may have. And Councilmember Liliquist and Councilmember Wise presented or provided us questions. We provided council with our responses and we could either go through those individually or if council had an opportunity to review them and still has any questions or would like clarification, we could do that as well. We did not have another presentation today, but do you have the PowerPoint loaded up and can go to any projects that council may have questions about? So it's really at council's direction and how you'd like to proceed. Oh, and I'm sorry, I would like to say we do need to have the TIP adopted by, uh, the end of the month. So we would hope to have council take action tonight. And if there's anything unresolved or additional questions, we can come back tonight and provide any answers that we couldn't today.
Okay. Great. And there were, there was, Michael's memo made it in the packet, but Jack, sorry, I didn't know there was another one, but there are two inserts in the packet here with Ted's responses from Jack and Michael.
Well, Michael's memo is just a list of questions, but the responses are not in there, right?
Right. They're in the separate handout. We didn't give Public Works enough time to get it in the packet.
So I can, as I said, I can go through them if, if that's what council would like?
Any preference from council?
I've read them.
Okay. Well, we've read them. Yes, Michael?
Well, I asked, I think like 12 or 13 items and I'm satisfied with half of them. So rather than go through all of them, I think we should be selective.
I'm not sure what you were, you were saying. I didn't understand that.
Ted was asking, shall we go through them all one by one? And I was saying, no, I'd rather go through some of them and others not.
Okay. So do you have, because I know...
Sure. We could start with, some of these aren't really questions for staff, but I think I would like to have discussions amongst ourselves. So for example, I have that table in the packet like this, which, you know, raises the issue that each year we, we are presented with kind of ascending scales that every year we're gonna spend a little bit more, a little bit more on arterial resurfacing because we never resurface enough. We know we're behind. But as you go, you know, down the table, each year the numbers are adjusted downward. So even though it looks like we're gonna be spending more and more, it turns out we're not actually spending more and more. I think that's important for us to realize that though the city has tried repeatedly to ramp up the spending on road resurfacing, in truth, from the street fund, we've not been able to achieve that goal. So to me, this is more, I think, um, a red flag that I want the council to be aware of. Personally, I'm disappointed by it. I, probably the Public Works feels the same. They understand the need even more acutely than I do. So this wasn't a question to staff. This was more kind of a red flag to the rest of the council and to see whether or not anybody else agreed with it. This was a concern and something the council should pay attention to.
I've got a question regarding to it in terms of procedure. That's a good question, but in terms of passage and moving forward the TIP, is there a question that relates specifically or changed to the TIP that we're discussing? Cause that's, that's a good question to raise up, raise with our Public Works Committee and/or Committee at other points to have that discussion should be increased. But is there a question or motion or something regarding the existing TIP that we should consider? Is that, that, because that's what we're considering right now. Is, I've, I've read your thing and it, and I agree, you know, that's with that, but it doesn't affect the current TIP.
Well, there are several...
And that's what, uh, the discussion right now is...
There were several items like this one, um, that I think are raising policy and planning questions. And I, I take your point, Terry. I would, if we don't wanna discuss them now, then I guess I would do is I would right now at this moment, um, make a motion to refer to committee, the Public Works Committee, uh, further discussion of our arterial resurfacing, uh, program, uh, looking both forward and backward.
Okay. I'll second.
Okay. So we have a motion and second before the committee to ref, yes, Ted?
Yeah. I, I, we would be happy to come back at a work session and, and we are definitely in agreement with, uh, Councilmember Liliquist that more resources need to go towards resurfacing. And it really has been a matter of the stresses and the pressures on the street fund. We have tried to, in our planning documents, show the need for additional resurfacing. But at the time of adopting the budget in an effort to get a balanced street fund, unfortunately, the overlay has at times been the one where we've actually taken the money from. Moving forward, we have adjusted slightly downward based on some of the, you know, things that have happened in the budget process, diverting money from street fund to general fund is one example that happened last year. And then just generally, uh, slower increases in revenue. So we're using a 2% annual increase in the street, in sales tax. That sales tax percentage that comes to the street fund, our expenditures are outpacing that. So when you look at what we can put towards overlay, unfortunately, it has been declining over the years. Although I would say in 2009, we have zero overlay. Uh, and that's when the sales tax went from 50% to the street fund to 42 and a half percent to the street fund. Even with that, we've been, been able to ramp this thing up to close to 2 million a year, uh, give or take out of street fund plus the TBD. But we'll prepare an information when council would like and come back to the work session with more detail.
Okay. So we have a motion and second before us to refer to the Public Works Committee, uh, this, uh, discussion, further discussion of our overlay policy. All those in favor of, is that okay if I?
Please. Please continue.
Yes. All those in favor of the motion, uh, recommended to the committee of the whole, uh, the council tonight? Answer aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Okay. Do you have, we will bring that forward tonight. Your gavel back.
Thank you, Terry. Michael?
So related to that, um, has to do with the fact that one of the reasons why the road resurfacing account is going down, uh, anticipated in next year, the year after that, I think it is, has to do with 1.75 million, actually over a two-year period, diverted from what would have been in previous TIP's road resurfacing money is now diverted to the Mahogany Avenue Arterial Project, which has to do with a series of improvements being made north of the Baker View. Again, this isn't a question with regard to the TIP, but it's a policy issue that we have stated repeatedly that we wanted to put an emphasis on, quote, fix it first, that our highest priority was maintaining our existing infrastructure rather than capacity building. This is a direct shift away from fix it first towards a capacity project. So I think, again, the council needs to be aware that we're, if this capacity project is important enough, then we may wanna make that shift. But this TIP, tip didn't highlight the fact that this is, there's actually a policy question and a policy change being recommended here. And I wanted to highlight, this is a poly-change, this is a policy recommendation. And frankly, it's one which makes me a little uncomfortable. I'm not sure how I feel about it.
But can you clarify which one you're talking about in your memo?
Um, this has to do with the interrelationship between two of the projects, interrelation between project number one and project number 12.
Okay. Is there a place in your memo that talks about that?
Yes, there is. It is on, it is under the product number one, arterial resurfacing. It is the ending paragraph in my discussion.
Okay. Great. And Terry?
Yeah. Yeah. Similar to, uh, the first issue since this, again, doesn't speak to the current tip in terms of amending, changing, deleting, or whatever. I think the discussion of this would be more pertinent, again, either in another session or in, in, you know, our Public Works. So we can deal with the current tip and the issues relating, uh, yeah, to, to that. And so...
Ted?
Yeah. As it relates to Mahogany and Councilmember Liliquist is correct, we needed to provide matching funds for that project. And that project, we were successful in getting both state and federal grants. And this really is a case where we're balancing multiple priorities. Those employment lands, and we've talked a lot about the employment lands north of Baker View, we need to provide infrastructure, leverage public funds with private funds to provide the infrastructure to allow those employment lands, you know, densely zoned commercial industrial land to develop. So we got the grants, we were successful in that regard, but we have to show the local match. When we're looking at that, we identify street funds as really the only revenue we have for local match for those federal and state grants. I will say though, we have been conservative with the transportation impact fees. If development occurs in that area, everyone that develops in that area will have to pay their TIP, their transportation impact fees, which can be used for matching for the grants and also go to Mahogany itself or other infrastructure in the area. We identified it as street fund and we did take it out of what would normally be overlay. But we're trying to balance those two needs, council direction for, you know, economic development and the policies that support that and the fix it first, which is very important to us. And, and we try to put as much as we can into replacing and repairing infrastructure, both in terms of overlay and also sidewalk replacement and other projects like that. But it is balancing the two.
Yeah. I, I completely agree. This is a, a balancing and I understand why you would strike that balance. My, my point here is that that balances a policy decision and that this council needs to realize by endorsing this, there are embedded policy judgments being made. It's just not, it's just a neutral work plan, that there are policy implications, since I wanted to bring that up.
Yes, Ted?
Yeah. And, you know, we feel like the policy direction is given when Mahogany and those projects are added to the TIP. And this is not the first year that Mahogany's been on the six-year TIP. We added it last year. And the policy direction is the economic development chapter, the comprehensive plan. The policy statement is in there that says we'll work to provide infrastructure, leveraging public money with private investment. And I think that's important. There's a lot of private investment in the combination of both Arctic and Mahogany. And in the responses we provided, we talk about how from a grant funding agency, those two arterials work together. And the $2.1 million, which is privately funded Arctic, is part of the overall arterial connection of Arctic and Mahogany. So there's a lot of private investment in those two arterial networks. The public funds really are doing that. They're leveraging the private investment to serve that area. So in that regard, we feel like policy direction's been given in the, both the comprehensive plan in terms of the economic development chapter that has language in there that talks about this very thing. And also in the fact that Mahogany was put on the six-year TIP. So...
Right. But policy, but that may be well and true, but, um, last year we didn't take from the resurfacing dollars. So that's the change that's new this year.
Kelly?
Well, I think Ted was talking about the ability to get the matching funds so that we could do, uh, a road, road projects that line up with the street fund. And I think last year there was money taken out of the street fund without a policy discussion really to be used for other projects. And that was a decision that the council made. So I would welcome the idea if we're gonna protect street money for street or other projects rather than potentially economic development or social service projects, which is what we did last year when we took money out of the street fund. So just, just to be clear, I think that's a good, a good discussion to have. And I appreciate Terry being willing to do it in his committee because I think it's a bigger discussion than the TIP. And the council did approve the TIP last year, understanding that we would have to have matching funds to move forward on it. And I think the Public Works Department has done a very good job of develop, of balancing their resources for the infrastructure needs that they are responsible for.
I think we know, uh, why this is on the TIP and how it got there. Is, uh, anyone in favor of referring a discussion about some of these other policy issues to committee, Public Works Committee, I imagine, similar to that last issue? Michael?
Frankly, I think the previous motion sort of includes this because the whole issue of finding adequate money for road resurfacing is that there are competing needs. So I, I think it's probably already enrolled in there.
Okay. Great. Then we can move on. Michael?
I wanna ask about project 14, West Maplewood. This is a very popular project in the neighborhood. I certainly support it. But one part of my question wasn't really answered. It had to do with stormwater. I guess I should've been more specific. Are we thinking that for the sidewalk portion, not the road resurfacing portion, but for the pedestrian things, that we might be able to do something like North Shore Drive? We might be able to use pervious surface... that we might be able to do something like North Shore Drive, we might be able to use pervious surfaces? I mean, it's a pretty flat part of our city, I—I hear there's problems with puddling already. The TIP won't include the stormwater portion of the project, but I'm asking, will there be a stormwater portion of the project? Will it include looking at pervious surfaces?
Yeah.
LIDs?
Sure, so the, um, in—the response, we talk about a grant that we applied for through the state, a Safe Route to Schools grant. And we've identified funding for the paving, the repaving portion of West Maplewood. And that's, uh, the paving section, that's the resurfacing portion of the Transportation Benefit District. Uh, that works out nicely in our mind, because we would be adding bicycle lanes to as part of that resurfacing project. The grant that we applied for would then complete the curb gutter sidewalk portion of the corridor project. And associated with that would be all of the necessary stormwater. So when we identified the cost estimate for the Safe Routes to School grant, we included the necessary stormwater to treat the additional paving area and the curb gutter sidewalk.
Additional stormwater or something maybe fancier?
It would be low-impact development type, that's kind of the standard now. We look at it and it is based on the soils. And if the soils allow, and even in some cases where the soils aren't idy— ideal, we'll overexcavate to allow for pervious. We did that on Bill McDonald Parkway, where the sidewalk was pervious pavement, even though soils weren't great. We were able to deal with that by overexcavating a bit and adding some storage there to allow for the slower infiltration rates. So yeah, that would be kind of the first—the first thing that the stormwater engineers and the design engineers would look at. And if we can use pervious, that's certainly going to be our first choice. Uh, that will obviously reduce the amount of detention, if any, that we have to do and help with water quality. So that would be part of the design element. The funding would be Safe Routes to School, if we're successful in getting that grant. If we're not, and this was another part of your question, would we use stormwater utility money to pay for the stormwater portion of that project? And that's certainly an option that we would consider as we try to find a funding package. If we don't get the grant, we'll have to find, you know, close to a million dollars of other mon—other way to finance it. And it could be a combination of street funds, stormwater funds, whatever we can get together based on other needs.
Thank you, and Jack?
A follow-up on that project, first of all, you're prob—living in that neighborhood, you probably will have good—
Yeah.
Good perk on that for— for pervious. Is there—was there a reason why to stop at Alderwood versus going up to the city limit line?
I—I think it's, um, kind of a scope that we feel we can fund in a shorter term. I think ultimately, and Chris will help me out here, that the—the bicycle and pedestrian master plans do call for going all the way out to Bennett, Baker View.
Well, actually, the—the Bicycle Master Plan calls for bike lanes up to Alderwood and then from there, it goes west on Alderwood over to Bennett as a bicycle boulevard. And so, um, we chose this section, as Ted said, it was partly cost and scope. We initially looked at maybe going all the way to the city limits, that's very, very expensive. And we were not going to be able to find enough grant money to do something like that.
Yeah, the side—the sidewalk issues are the same on both sides of Alderwood. Yeah, it's a—there's really no distinction between, um, one side versus the other. So I just was wondering what your thought process was on that? Or if we would go and do that as a phase two later on?
I—I think that might be the—the approach that we would take, is a future phase to complete the area.
Okay. Jack and then Michael.
I'm—I'm going to take a stab at one here, Michael. I wanted to go to the list of questions that I had. And first of all, the—the tip table has a lot of information and it's very well presented. And I—I really appreciate, uh, you know, you get a lot of information for just a couple pages worth—worth of, um, facts in here. What I didn't understand, and I guess I—I'm still—still confused from the responses that were—that were provided. When I'm looking at the—uh, project number one with the annual, uh, arterial street resurfacing and the budget amounts there, and then I look at the—these two projects of Alabama and West—West Maplewood, I'm not sure if it's an additive thing or—or what, like—so let me use numbers and—and see if I—I can get my answer this way.
And Jack, before you jump in that, is there a place in your memo that you're referring to also that we can follow along?
It would be the third page, it would be question—or it would be under project number six.
Okay, thank you.
And so the, um, the question would be, under—under 2015, uh, resurfacing, there's 790,000 for street and 16—or 1.6 million for TBD. Then there is an additional—I'm thinking that there's an additional 875,000 on top of that. And that—the 875, okay, so that's what it is?
That's correct. Yeah, so when we are looking at the—and what Jack's talking about is the Alabama project where we had the list of safety improvements that were—will hopefully be funded. We still haven't heard back from WashDOT. We—just as a—as as a side, we sent the council's recommendation down to the DOT. We were hoping to get a response by today. We haven't heard back, but assuming they approve the improvements—the safety improvements as—as forwarded down, uh, the grant would cover all of those. The city had intended—or staff had intended to repave all of Alabama. That would not have been grant-funded, that would have been with local street money that we paved that. But Alabama's high—high on our resurfacing list and it made sense to do that, both for the safety improvements that it would provide, but also while we're in there to—to do it at the same time we're doing everything else. In Chris's response, what he was referring to is, with the changes in the safety improvements, where we're no longer widening at St. Paul for the full signal and some of the other changes, we think our resurfacing budget is being reduced from a million to eight—uh, 875. And so—but it was always intended to be additive to what you see in the first line item.
Okay, and then this is a very small point for Chris. Is the addition then of 875 on project number six, should the subtotal be 875 instead of 1 million?
Yes, I can tell you, I've tried to fix this like three times, and I don't know why it keeps showing up.
I appreciate that.
I am going to make sure you get a clean copy tonight, though, all right?
Okay, you don't need to do that for—well, unless we want to have that as a—
We'll have it.
Yeah, okay. One other—one other question I had had to do with, um, just understanding this private mitigation issue associated. This is the next page on project 13 and project 19.
Yeah.
The response really doesn't seem to really, um, answer the question I'm trying to ask here. And I'm—maybe I should just rephrase it. I—I guess I'm looking—this—I'm—I'm looking at project 13 and project 19 and seeing the—the—the line of private mitigation in there, but there's no number there of what the expectation is. And so is—is the private mitigation—I mean, I—I—I see under project 18 that it says that there's mitigations right in the box. And we don't know what it is, but it's right in the box. But I don't see anything like that or a number for project 13 or project 19. And I'm—you know, they do have mitigation costs or revenues that should be—be coming into the city. So what are they and should they be reflected in the TIP?
Sure, so this is actually very similar to something we talked about earlier in terms of the private mitigation up in the northwest part of the city. All the TIF that we collect in this area can be used for this type of a project. And the unknown 3 million represents money, we don't know where it's going to come from. Some of it could actually come from private mitigation funding, whether it's impact fees or some kind of SEPA mitigation contribution. We don't know when development's going to happen out here, but certainly that area is zoned for up to 2,000 homes. So new subdivision could come online, impact fees go into the street fund, we can use that money towards part of this. We're actually writing grants right now. And again, with those grants, we're going to have to find matching funds from somewhere. And mitigation can also serve in that role. So there's many different ways that mitigation can be contributed. I can—I can change this line to make it look like some of the other ones. Um, I'm not quite sure why one says mitigation in the box over here and this one doesn't. But we don't know when that development will actually happen.
I think that's the—the—the ultimate point, is we don't know what the dollar amount will be either. It depends on the pace of development and the type of development. And the mitigation would not only be in the form of traffic impact fees, but it could also be in the form of—of developer contributions to projects if they're required to do that through the SEPA process. So, uh, I think the reason it's blank is because we don't know and it's all been lumped into the total unknown funding.
Okay, I'm just wanting to get that clear.
Yeah.
So that—that would explain the—the James Baker View intersection, because there are other uses besides the new development that would be happening towards the north.
And one—more point on that, though, and it—it's in the answer, is that, you know, what we're trying to do is correct an existing safety issue at this intersection. It's not just because of additional development happening.
I understand that part, yeah. On project 19, however, that—that one seems like, because it's supposed to be 100% funded by the developer, to me, it seems like we know what—if we have an unknown cost of 300—or 3 million dollars, that that really should be private mitigation, because the developer is going to be doing 100% of the—the work on that.
And—and you're absolutely right, but the developer's only doing one phase right now, the first phase. It's—remains to be seen whether future phases are going to come online. He could sell the property, a different developer could be involved, we don't know. And—and he is, in fact, responsible for building the first phase of this. And he can't go to phase two until he actually dedicates the public right of way for this road.
So for instance, if the first phase is completed, and as Chris mentioned, it has to be private—privately funded or the development won't go. The second phase, depending on how that development proceeds, at some point, the city may want to make the connection for other reasons as identified in the comprehensive plan. At that point, it may not be entirely private—privately funded. It may be if—the—if the development continues through. But if the development stops and something else happens, it could be developed a different way with grant or city funding or a combination of that and private funding. It's just unknown.
Well, that would be something that probably should have been reflected in the annexation analysis, the financial analysis, if there was going to be—because I think that—that analysis had—had the developer paying the full freight. And now it seems like we may have this city cost associated with that particular annexation.
Well, the city isn't seeking any funding for this at this time, but like Ted said, when we go through our next comp plan update and—and maybe another one past that, if development hasn't happened, but it's seen as a valuable connection for the city for public purposes, we may choose at some point to go seek some grant funding. That's certainly not something we have on our radar screen right now. But it's something that the comp plan requires and the annexation agreement said we needed that connection. So right now, it's 100% development, but we—we don't know what the timing ball that's going to be.
Okay, and I had one more, but I feel like because of time, I would rather just bring it up tonight and—and ask for an amendment to it at—in tonight's discussion.
And can I—can I ask if we at least have the subject matter, because—
It's the commercial street green.
Right, and I can speak—
It's June, it's got to be a time for—
Yeah, and I can also at that time, maybe add some clarity to, um, the earlier discussion about Granary Blodel. And I—I think—I think the conversations that I've had with Jack and what Terry was trying to relate are the same. And it's—it's—I'll try to clarify—
Okay.
The discussions we've had with the port on that.
Okay, so it's okay to save that for this evening, everybody? Okay, okay, I saw Terry and then Michael.
Yeah, I am going to move that we—we recommend approval of the TIP tonight.
Second, uh? Hey, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? Michael.
I'm—I'm going to vote no, because I have some unresolved issues, but I plan on bringing them up tonight. One of them is project number three, it's outlined in my memo, I think staff knows what my motion will be.
Want to discuss it at all right now?
Well, it—it has to do with the fact that we are naming the bicycle plans before the bicycle thing. It just—for me, it's out of order, to me, I would like to not include specific things and then add them when the time comes. We could talk about that tonight, I don't mind deferring until this evening. But for that reason, that unresolved issue, I'll—I'll vote no on the current motion.
Okay, any other discussion or questions for staff before we vote? Okay, all those in favor of recommending approval of the TIP, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Any abstentions? Okay, motion passes five-one with one absent, we'll bring that forward tonight. Okay, um, we have one set of minutes from June 9th. May I ask a procedural question, Peter, on these? I was just re-looking at them, I wasn't here for half of these meetings, but I'm going to vote on them as a package.
So, um, there's no rule that says you can't vote on minutes for a meeting that you weren't present for. I mean, there's lots of things you can do to assure yourself that the minutes are—
Yeah, okay, just wanted to double check. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Jack? Yeah, these are committee minutes.
Committee minutes. On, um, I ju—I wanted to, I think, uh, let's see. On the Public Works meeting of, uh, June 9th, it's a page one of—of our packet of minutes. I believe I—I voted on—this was—this had to do with moose boats and the fireboat. I believe that I voted to yes on that, I did not abstain.
Okay.
I don't—I don't think I've ever abstained, but—
So I—I think you voted no, yeah.
Yeah, I voted yes.
You voted for it or against it?
I—I wanted to move it forward to the—
Right, okay.
Okay, so you would like to change, uh, that or correct that? It says abstention, Jack Weiss, but instead it'll say motion carried 3-0.
Yes, and then, um, there was one other one, let me quickly. On, uh, page two, let's see, we're going to, uh, the committee of the whole minutes of June 9th, towards the end of the packet, so on page two, has to do with, uh, the top of page two, public access television update. I don't think that we actually—in the committee, that we recommended approval of the trial basis. We—what we recommended instead was to have the staff come back to us with a—
Right.
Implementation plan.
Right.
Which was different.
I think so too, I—I think you're right.
Okay, why don't we hold off on approving these and, uh, Marie will have an opportunity to go back and review conversation, make sure. Okay, I'll hold on these then. Any old or new business? Roxanne?
I just have a couple of, um, community updates. So the Bellingham School Board experienced a resignation. Scott Stockburger has resigned from the Bellingham School Board. And so thus, the school board will be selecting a new person who will serve for the remainder of his term. So I just wanted to let the community members know if you've ever thought about stepping up your service to the school district, um, definitely consider applying. The application is on the school board's website, but you can also call the school district for more information about that process, their selection and how they'll go about it. Um, just one other quick thing, um, I rode my bike downtown this weekend and unfortunately, I heard from a person who lives downtown that someone is going around and stealing bike tires that are parked downtown. So one thing I want people to do for overall safety and bike safety is to be sure that you're locking at least one of your wheels, uh, along with, you know, the bar of your bike. So that will decrease the opportunity for this person to do that. Also, if you see any suspicious behavior relating to this, please call 911. And if you get a chance, catch a photo if you can, because we just don't want this to be happening in our community.
Thanks Roxanne. Michael and then Jack?
I'll do this quick, because I'm running out of time. Um, this week, I was in Spokane, the Association of Washington Cities Conference. But actually, at the very beginning, right before the conference, to the very end, right after the conference, was two important things, both related to freight rail, uh, traffic and the possible impacts on many cities, not just Bellingham. At the beginning of the week, there was a joint meeting, uh, of the Washington Legislature to hear about, um, freight rail impacts and issues. And part of that highlighted the fact that there are, um, 2,800 at-grade crossings in Washington State, 450 of those are in city limits. 37 of those are high-priority crossings, including some in, uh, Watcomb County. And an estimated cost to address those would be over a billion dollars. So our issue with rail, uh, crossing issues is actually statewide. And that, there's a— and—and related to that is, there's an—Association of Washington Cities ad hoc freight rail task force that the mayor is on that met on Friday, Kath and I were both there. Um, and that, uh, the Association of Washington Cities will be one vehicle for us to carry forward to actually the state and the federal levels where these issues can be adequately addressed. So, I just want to report out, not only to the rest of the council, but to our community, that the city is not only paying attention to freight rail issues, but, you know, looking at how it's being dealt with at a statewide and nationwide level.
Thank you, Michael. Kelly?
Well, I was on the phone call for a while because I was unable to go to Spokane, and we are in the process of writing that letter, and I was just going to follow up with Michael to see if we'd gotten feedback from the council. I know Terry had made a comment, but other than that, we're kind of, we're waiting. So, if there's information that you'd like to give us, whether from your trip or something else, that would be helpful. And I think that we got some information when Brian was on the call with me, so we got some information on the call, too.
Great. Thank you. Jack?
I had a question for the mayor. So, the Public Development Authority has had a lot of hardships and a lot of barriers that they've had to go through in order to be where they are today. Previous administration, previous council in the Port of Bellingham have, I think, have really put a lot of unfair barriers to them, you know, in trying to develop something that, you know, give them some sort of direction and give them enough resources to be able to accomplish their goals. So, we all know what they're trying to do right now with Army Street, and that they have been systematically moving through each one of the steps that they agreed to do from our budget discussion last fall. And they're still, you know, I attend the meetings as many of those as I can. I attended one last week, and one of the report-outs based on what was happening with their board membership, they've had a board member that has, that was stepped down a few years ago, and it still has not been replaced. There's been another one that I believe it was from last year that stepped down and has not been replaced. And now we have a third member that has termed out, or not termed out, but has been at the end of their service and is now stepped down. So, there's only four members left. They're coming up with the most critical decision of their organizational life with what to do as far as their recommendations to the council and to the other partners of this coalition of people that they want to try and get Army Street together. But apparently, there's not going to be any recommendations for further board members until after the budget discussion this fall. At least, that's what was reported.
I think the letter that I wrote to all the applicants, because I've been interviewing applicants for the positions, was that after the September meeting, I'm prepared to either appoint board members or not, depending on what the desires of the council are. But I didn't feel if we were waiting to have them meet their goals that, Peter, we just, did we just sign? I just signed the performance MOA that you asked me to do, that I was not going to appoint people if, in fact, the future of the PDA may be uncertain. So, we're prepared. We've interviewed. I have candidates who can fill those positions. And before they have to vote on something where they'll need those members, I will fill those positions if we move forward with the PDA.
But wouldn't it be, it wouldn't seem fairer, though, that those, if they are going to go and vote on those types of things, that they would be present during the summers when the reports are being given out so that they can get better background to make a better decision?
Well, first of all, the reports can come to the council, so they would have the opportunity then. Or they can attend the meetings. Because they're not a board member, doesn't prevent them from learning the issues. In fact, if they want to be a board member, that would be a good indication that they wanted to put in the time and effort to learn about the issues. So, there's nothing that stops anyone who has spoken with me from coming to the PDA meetings and learning about the issues, so they'll be prepared.
Okay. I would request that you reconsider that, because I really feel like, you know, there's really no reason not to go and appoint them sooner than later.
I've had candidates and people say, if you can't tell me that this is going to go on, I don't want to be appointed now. And so, in September, we'll know if it's going to go on or it's not going to go on. And then I'm happy to appoint the board members, but I can't make people be on the board for a month or two if, in fact, we decide that that isn't the best use of our economic development money. You can make a request to me, obviously, in, you know, to go ahead and appoint the board members, but it is really my decision about who I'm appointing and I think when I'm appointing them. So, in, I think in two months, that will be resolved.
But it won't be, because the council won't really make a decision of whether or not the PDA is continuing or not until probably December, when the final budget is adopted.
Well, that isn't my understanding, because there was supposed to be a check-in, and that's why we brought in MOA, very clearly, that we would do, I thought, in July. It was extended till September. I don't know if Michael or you or Terry, I can't remember who extended it, that there would be a review and a discussion about, because there was only funding up till July in the last budget in 2014. And then when Allison came to work for some other department, that money was appropriated by the board to extend Jim's contract longer, but there was not, it was a half-year contract. And we're going to see if, in fact, that contract has been, or the understanding has been fulfilled. And I'm perfectly fine with that. That's why I signed the MOA. But I believe that a majority of the council said, do an MOA, and we're going to follow up on it. And if I'm wrong, I need the council to tell me that that is not, I misunderstood.
That was my understanding. I just, it's no secret that there's some uncertainty amongst us as to whether or not the PDA will continue. I think Kelly and I discussed this. I felt personally really that that was a courteous move to not appoint people in an era of uncertainty about what they were going to be asking to provide input to. So, also, it's very difficult to come on board for six weeks or so and be asked to make that kind of decision the folks who are on the PDA board or... Anyway, this is just my opinion, but that's what I know about it. Do we want to make a longer discussion about this at another time?
Finish it.
Want to finish the discussion? Terry and then Jack?
I would like to have a clear discussion, yeah, but I don't know if I want to do it right now because we're going to have a long night tonight, but, but, yeah. We've got a budget decision coming up, and that's where the decisions are made, what's funded to go through. I've seen things flop quick.
Right. Michael?
The topic right now is not the PDA. It's a longer discussion. What Jack brought up is the vacancies on the board. And what I guess I would say is, Kelly, I would suggest your delays is creating more uncertainty than necessary, and that uncertainty could be harmful to the PDA. There may be a way around this. You already have interviewed your candidates. My guess is you already know who you will be appointing if the PDA goes forward. I would recommend that you make those tentative appointments now and then say, "But people do not have to accept or not accept the offer until September." In other words, if at least we know who those candidates are, and then say, and that action won't actually occur. It can be delayed. That reduces some of the uncertainty.
The candidates were recommended by the PDA board. Those are the people I interviewed. I wasn't interviewing my own candidates, and that's exactly what I told them, is be prepared for September. Because that was the date that I understood we would be making a decision. So, they have that information.
But if you telegraph now publicly the names that you've agreed with, that gives the PDA a greater air of certainty, which strengthens their hand in their ongoing work.
They came from the PDA, Michael. If you want to know what their names are, you can ask Scott or Jim who they were. They all came from the PDA.
Yeah, so they made recommendations. Kelly interviewed. Is there any other action we want to take?
And I didn't find anyone unacceptable or-
I'm just trying to reduce the amount of uncertainty that isn't necessary.
Well, part of the issue is that I think that the PDA can move forward with the things that they're supposed to do now, whether there are people on the board or not, because they don't have to approve anything right now. So, I don't see that not putting board members on in order to spare them uncertainty about what happens if I put them on now, and that's my opinion. I mean, I realize people disagree, stops the PDA from fulfilling their obligations. They have the opportunity to fulfill their obligations now, because I don't think there'll be a vote. If there is, and Peter can tell me, or someone can tell me, that there's something that will hold them back, then I'd be happy to reconsider.
Boards do more than vote. They provide wisdom and guidance to the organization.
Do we want to refer this to another time? Or keep? Okay, we've got an executive session item we should move into if we're done with this one for now. Okay. Any other older new business? I had one item. And I think I just need head nods. Last year, we flew the pride flag at City Hall. And I'd like to again, and Mayor Kelly has indicated she'd like to again. Is that something?
I couldn't quite hear what you said.
Flew the pride flag at City Hall for an event. It's the Pride Parade.
For the Week, Pride Week?
Pride Week, yeah. Am I seeing nods? Okay, got nods. I officially got nods from all folks up here. Gene, are you nodding as you watch the TV?
Gene's nodding.
Gene did, yeah, say he was going to watch us. Okay, so with that, we're going to move into executive session. We have one item today. Executive sessions are closed to the public. A report will be given at the regular meeting. A governing body may hold an executive session only for specified purposes, which are identified in RCW 42.30. And like I said, we have one item. It should last approximately 10 minutes, and we will reconvene probably at 4:57. But I'm just going to say at 5:00, and I'll be back by 5:00 to adjourn. Thank you. Thank you. Forgot I could come back early. Like, I can't come, I'm supposed to not come back late, but I can come back early.
Yeah, you're technically not supposed to, but...
Oh, no?
But it could be interceded because it's the last item you can do, so...
Okay. Okay. Call this meeting back to order. The executive session is concluded. A report will be made during the regular meeting this evening. Committee meetings are called back to order, and we are now adjourned. See you tonight at 7:00.
Thank you.
Thank you.